...for a stay order, then the president could escalate to the Supreme Court to intervene. Maybe that would be a last ditch effort. And to be clear, we don't really know what documents have been released to the courts yet. We know that there was some conversation over the weekend, some breaking news from other folks about that proved that Lisa Cook did not commit mortgage fraud. And so this is going to be a bit thorny right down to the wire.
Just a few details for people who are catching up to this story. The president and his allies had said that Cook claimed that two different properties were her primary residence, and the documents, the paperwork you're referring to, might suggest, to back up her claim that in fact she did disclose that only one of those was a second home, meaning she might get a better rate on a mortgage. Is that right, Jill?
Right. I mean, look, what you need to understand is that when a lender is looking at you as a borrower, they want to know, are you living here? Is this your second primary residence, meaning is it a vacation home? And if that's the case, then it's fine. They usually will give you a decent rate, the same as if it were your primary mortgage. But if you're using it as a rental property, that's usually the distinguishing line in the sand where a lender might say, hmm, it's rental property? We might charge more interest. So again, I have not seen these documents, but this is quite common for people who have second homes that don't rent them out, that they say, this is a vacation home, it's a "second" quote unquote, primary residence.
Just to draw a line under why we're talking about this, the Federal Reserve and politics are not supposed to be so closely tied. Is that correct?
Listen, the Federal Reserve is supposed to be independent because we don't want politics to play into this. The reason is that if you have, say, an inflationary surge, you want the Federal Reserve to be able to raise interest rates. And if you feel like that the Fed is kowtowing to an administration to always lower interest rates, which can juice the economy in the short term, you might face even higher inflation in the longer term. So we do like to imagine that Federal Reserve officials are independent of the process of politics.
All right. So that brings us to the economics of this week's interest rate decision. What are some of the factors besides politics that the governors will be considering as they decide whether to lower them or not?
You know, when you think about what the Federal Reserve's job is, it's to keep in balance two issues that are really important in the economy. One is the labor market. So the Fed is supposed to make sure that we have an economy that can create enough jobs for anyone who wants a job. So that labor market is a very big focus of the Fed. But the other part of the Fed's goals is something called price stability. In other words, don't let inflation run rampant, but also if things get really bad, don't let deflation take hold. We don't want prices plummeting and staying down. Neither good for the economy. Now, in this current environment, when you look at both the labor market and prices, there are two different stories being told. The labor market is weakening. There's no doubt about it. We're not in a recession right now. The job growth is starting to taper off. And so that's one aspect, but at the very same time, we see some of the tariffs that have been enacted showing up in data that are really starting to see that inflation rate creep higher. So the Fed's got to balance those two. If they think the labor market is more important, they're going to cut interest rates. If they think that prices rising is an important part, they'll keep them where they are. Most believe that we are likely to get a quarter of a percentage point drop in interest rates when the Fed announces their decision on Wednesday.
And the president posted on social media today that Jerome Powell should cut interest rates now and bigger than he had in mind. So do you get the sense that this political debate about how much interest rates should be lowered or when will be over, no matter what the decision is?
It's never going to be over, not in this situation. And we know that the Federal Reserve Chair Powell has been in the crosshairs with the president for some time. But I also think that there's going to be an interesting moment here where there could be, maybe not now, but next year, where there are more Federal Reserve officials that are appointed by President Trump than by President Biden. And if that's the case, we might start to see a more aggressive cut in interest rates. But again, they're always data dependent. That's what they tell us.
Yeah, and that's the reason many say why Trump is trying to get Lisa Cook off the board. Jill Schlesinger, CBS News Business Analyst, host of Jill on Money. Thanks so much.
Thanks for having me.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix.
I'm Robin Young in Boston. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and The Music Emporium, guitar sellers for more than 55 years, celebrating the enduring presence of music made on the front porch and center stage. You can learn more at themusicemporium.com.
Radio IQ's Fall Fund Drive is underway, and we're asking for your support to continue the fact-based news, ideas, and storytelling you rely on every day. We're also needing to make up the loss of funds from the federal government. Our goal is 500 and 500. We're trying to welcome 500 new members and raise $500,000 by this Friday. So if you love Radio IQ and can't imagine a future without it, then please become a monthly contributor today. Visit our website, radioiq.org.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our 2:00 PM session of City Council here on September 15th, 2025. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through YouTube Live at youtube.com/rowanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Haggen.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
And Mayor Cobb.
Here, and we are all present. I'm honored to welcome the Reverend Carter Mundie, pastor with Redemption Church, to come and offer our invocation. And I will follow that with our pledge of allegiance. But before that, I'd like for us to all stand. I'd like to say a few words about a member of our community who played a significant role in many different ways, who died this past week, and would like to honor her with a moment of silence. Charlene Graves, who was a longtime member of the Roanoke Arts Commission, a local educator, artist, tennis player, entrepreneur, music lover, and celebrator of African cultures, passed away on Monday, September 8th, 2025. She served on the placemaking committee for the Arts Commission and was a big proponent of investment in murals to enliven the city. In early 2025, she gave the city of Roanoke her work, African Mosaic, which she painted between 1991 and 1993, as a tool to help teach about the countries of the African continent. It hangs in the Gainsborough Library. She also played a significant role in creating the history walk. If you're standing on the backside of the Hotel Roanoke and looking across Wells Avenue, you see a beautiful historic walk that tells some of the story of Gainsborough, and she played a very significant role in bringing that to fruition. So if you would please join me for a moment of silence in memory of Charlene Graves. Thank you. Reverend Mundie.
Thank you, guys. Let's pray. God, you're such a good Father to us, and we thank you for the gift of this city and for the leaders that you've placed here to serve Roanoke like Ms. Graves. Thank you for her and her service, God. And we confess that on our own, we're divided and broken people, but you sent Jesus to bring forgiveness and healing and hope to people like us. And so through his death and resurrection, we know you can make us one family and give us peace that lasts. And God, help us to place our faith in you for that. And I pray that for our city over our city, that many would be compelled by your grace to follow Jesus. And Father, we also ask that you bless this council with wisdom today and humility today, and that you'd guide their decisions for the good of every one of our neighbors in the city. Please protect us, God, and bring peace to our streets. And we just ask that you would help us to pursue unity across every difference that we face, because we're all human beings made in your image. And so may Roanoke be known as a place where your love and justice and truth flourish, because your grace is clearly at work among us. And so we pray this in Jesus' name today. Amen. Thank you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Reverend Mundie. And I want to thank Vice Mayor McGuire for leading the last council meetings when I was away with our delegation visiting our sister city, Wanjou. I brought back a couple of things that were presented to the city on behalf of the mayor and leadership in Wanjou. And I'll need help with one of them, but this first item is a lantern that's crafted from paper made, it's Korean paper, but its origins are in Wanjou, and it's called Hanji, H-A-N-J-I. And it's an extraordinary kind of paper that's handmade there in Wanjou. So this was crafted from that. And then if I could get two council members to just step down front and hold that out for me. I'll read the message that it says. So this was designed by a calligrapher who lives in Wanjou named Jong Byon Seek, and it was dedicated to us on August 23rd, 2025. Essentially says, celebrating the 60th anniversary of the sister city relationship between Wanjou and Roanoke, a new tomorrow that will bloom as a flower of fate, two cities with the same meaning and hundreds of years of history. So one of the things that I learned on the trip was how significant 60 is. In the Korean calendar, a much older calendar than ours, 60 is a full circle year. And there was a time when Koreans didn't live past 60. Of course, now everyone's living a lot longer. So 60 developed as a significant year of new beginnings, new life out of death. And so this 60th anniversary, which is an extraordinary relationship that began by two doctors, Dr. Robert Roth, who practiced not only in Roanoke and was significant in founding the Roanoke Valley Sister Cities many years later, but also Dr. Kim, who did his residency, he was from Wanjou, but he did his residency here in Roanoke at Jefferson Hospital in 1957 and 1958. And the two of them began conversations that essentially established the sister city relationship. There's a large stone tower in the park of the city hall that was dedicated in 1985 by then-mayor Noel C. Taylor. And many years later, in the early 2000s, there is a street in Wanjou named Roanoke Street. And there is a large stone marker for that, and Mayor Nelson Harris was able to be present for the unveiling of that. So it was really special to be part of that legacy of sister city relationship and friendship. And I wanted to just share these gifts. There were other gifts as well, but I wanted to highlight these gifts. These will be incorporated into our display cases on the main level, the second floor of the municipal building, as part of our sister cities collection. So thank you both for holding that up, and thank you all for the honor and opportunity of being able to visit Wanjou. On a fun side note, we were able to tour a ramen factory. And if you like ramen and you go into your local grocery store here in Roanoke and see Balduk, that ramen, the hot and spicy, is made in Wanjou. And we were able to tour a high school there, as well as a medical device factory, and the medical school and hospital where Dr. Roth and Dr. Kim both practiced. So it was a very special trip. We have some additional announcements today. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. You can access that application online at rowanokeva.gov. As a reminder, we want to share with our business owners, nonprofit organizations, and faith-based community that we are hosting the 2025 Mayor's Fall Business Summit, a free educational event that will help local businesses navigate these challenges, network with each other, and connect with city resources. The summit will be held at Virginia Western Community College from 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM on Monday, September 22nd. We are pleased to announce that our keynote speaker will be Robert Frayland, president and CEO of RP Frayland Incorporated, a fully integrated real estate development company based here in Roanoke, Virginia. In addition to hearing from Mr. Frayland, participants will gain information and success strategies tailored to prospective, new, and established small businesses and nonprofit organizations. I'm really pleased that we offer this and that we have multiple tracks, not only for small business, but for nonprofit organizations in the community. All registered participants will receive a complimentary breakfast and lunch, and registration is available on the city's website at rowanokeva.gov. Next, we'll move into presentations and acknowledgements, and we'll begin with council shout-outs. And I'm going to start to my left with Councilman Nash.
Cool, 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 cool. You know, I'm going to shout out our clerks team, because when I walked into the room today, I noticed all of the fall decor on the table, and I thought to myself, I don't ever, at least I know me, I have not thanked them for all the work they do behind the scenes with sending constituents and citizens emails to us to make sure we're informed about what's going on. So thank you all for all that you do in keeping that back room looking nice and keeping our snacks filled up.
Thank you. Councilman Volason.
I think I'm going to be the first one to get to this one, but I want to shout out to the Roanoke Symphony Orchestra for the Symphony Under the Stars. See, gotcha. It was a great event. I think they probably had a record turnout. It was a beautiful night. It was great that they had it in September, a little more comfortable when it came to the temperature. I also wanted to shout out to Senator Mark Warner and his staff for putting together a housing conference in Richmond last week. It was really interesting to be able to be with other folks from throughout the Commonwealth to see what they're doing, what unique things cities are doing to deal with the affordable housing crisis, and also grateful for his work in getting 12% more LITX in the last bill that went through. That was really important. It's a really important piece of financing those affordable housing projects. So those are my shout-outs for this week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Powers.
Yes, if you missed Saturday night's event with the Roanoke Symphony, you missed a good one. And thank you to the city of Roanoke and Gentry Lock and Hawk for being the sponsors to that. But I want to do a shout out to the Burgland Center and their staff. They recently held a training event there for over 100 employees, to include their full-time employees and their part-time employees, to give them training on what their job duties are, new operational changes. And that's just absolutely wonderful, is people come into our city that are not from Roanoke and go there, and they don't really know where to go get a ticket, or they don't really know what's going on. And these people know, so they're training them to know it looks good, it keeps Roanoke looking good and strong. So thank you Burgland Center for all the things you do and putting on the entertainment for us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I want to give a shout out to our neighborhood team, Molly Hunter, and then all of the neighborhood groups that she works with that are organizing in their local neighborhood to get information out, hear from the residents and citizens. And I think this was not super recent, but in the last month or two, there were two neighborhood organizations that regathered, reformed themselves. I think it was Villa Heights and Forest Park. So I think that's really exciting to see. I appreciate everyone who participated in those, and just encourage, if you live in a neighborhood that does not have a neighborhood association, to reach out to Molly Hunter or any member of council if you want to talk about how to get one started. I think they're a really important way to keep our neighborhoods plugged in. So I just appreciate everyone on our city staff side that works with our neighborhood groups and our neighborhood groups. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My shout out is to Mr. Roman and staff for having completed a handicap parking ramp in front of the municipal building. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Haggen.
I'm going to take a little bit of a different shout out. I'm going to shout out Cardinal News for their hosting of the House District 40 Forum. You know, it's one of the things that I think is vastly important in our society, especially now, to make sure that people are informed about decisions to be made come November, and especially with early voting starting later this week. Also, shout out to the registrar, because they're going to need all the help and support that they need for 45 days of early voting as well.
Thank you. And I will conclude by giving a shout out to the organizers of the 9/11 memorial stair climb, which was actually held on Saturday. This has been going on for, I think, the last 11 years, and there are first responders who actually come from all over to participate in this. The climb involves 110 stories. We don't have a building in Roanoke that is 110 stories, but we do have the Wells Fargo Tower, which is 22 stories. So the climb involves going up those stairs five different times. And I did not complete that, but I did one round, and I will tell you, it is very challenging. And if you can imagine first responders in their full gear doing that work, it was a profoundly moving ceremony, and just watching the number of people that turned out to participate was inspiring. So again, we want to remember that it's not only in memory of those who died in 9/11 in New York, first responders, but also a celebration of public safety officials in our communities and the hard work they do. Thank you all. This afternoon, we have two proclamations, and I'm going to go down to the podium for these. First, I'll invite Katie Hedrick, our inclusive services manager, to join me at the podium. The first proclamation is in celebration of Welcoming Week. Whereas this September, communities, including Roanoke, will come together across the nation to find common ground with our neighbors, seek similarities within our different cultures and perspectives, and deepen our commitments to building a stronger and more resilient Roanoke. Whereas we are much stronger when we embrace our similarities and differences, and the members of our community will do just that by sharing food, music, art, conversation, and more throughout the week. And whereas while this week provides an opportunity to pause, reflect, and plan for the next phase of welcoming work in the city of Roanoke, our community prioritizes a spirit of welcoming and belonging year-round. Welcoming is a core part of who we are and who we have always been, and Roanoke will continue to choose connection, courage, and love over division, fear, and hate. Now therefore I, Joseph Elkhob, Mayor of the city of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim the week of September 14 through 20, 2025, throughout this great eight-time All-America City, and as the only welcoming, certified welcoming city in Virginia, and one of 25 in the nation, as Welcoming Week. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for your recognition of Welcoming Week. For many of you here, this is not the first time that you have heard a similar proclamation. But for those that are unfamiliar, Welcoming Week is an annual celebration led by Welcoming America, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that leads a movement of inclusive communities becoming more prosperous by ensuring that everyone belongs. The city's membership with Welcoming America affirms our belief that all people, including immigrants, are valued contributors and are vital to the success of our communities and a shared future. This is the seventh year that the city of Roanoke has celebrated Welcoming Week, and it is our second celebration as being a certified welcoming city. As we look across the national landscape, we see growing division across communities. We hear stories of violence and hate and prejudice, and very often neighbors are separated by visible and invisible characteristics. And sometimes, at least for me, this weight can feel insurmountable. And even in Roanoke, it's easy to spot the differences within our communities and to think of them as something that divides us. But what if our differences are what we need to build something better? Welcoming Week is an opportunity for neighbors to explore one another's different cultures, experiences, and perspectives, and in doing so, to find what connects them. Because maybe differences aren't something to overcome. Instead, it's a thing that multiplies what's possible and shapes what's next. While the city of Roanoke is committed to broadening inclusivity and building a welcoming infrastructure throughout the year, Welcoming Week is an opportunity for us to cultivate the awareness and energy that we need to sustain our year-long welcoming efforts. So to highlight just two of the ways that we're celebrating Welcoming Week here in Roanoke, tomorrow we have a tour of the municipal building with the learners from Blue Ridge Literacy. So they'll be able to come and see what does local government look like for us here in Roanoke. They'll be able to meet with city staff and just see the buildings and the departments and the work that we do. And then this Friday, we'll also have our annual citizenship celebration, where we will recognize the hard work of folks that have gained U.S. citizenship this year, and then also just talk about different ways that they can be civically involved here in Roanoke. So thank you again, Mayor, City Council, and for city leadership, for your enthusiasm about being a welcoming community, and for your support of this year-round work. It makes a difference, and it's just one of the things that makes Roanoke such an incredible place to live, learn, work, and play. So thank you. Sure.
Katie. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all that work, and it is really special for us to be the only city in Virginia that's welcoming, and making sure I'm a welcomeer as well. So thank you very much for what you do. And I remember last year, I went to the citizen event, and that was really exciting to see, and to be able to get to interact with folks that are just becoming citizens was really, I love the program that allows people to come in and see what we're doing here at the municipal building, because they feel that connection and they feel more at home because of it. So thank you.
Who else?
I'd like to say thank you as well, too, for all the work that you do, and we do appreciate it, and we really want all of our people to feel welcome to come to the city of Roanoke. Thank you.
Well, as you all have reminded us, this is part of the environment we create in Roanoke, and it was really special during intermission at the Symphony Under the Stars, a young man came up to me who's moved here from Sweden and wanted to know who could help him on his path to citizenship. And I was able to talk about Blue Ridge Literacy and the welcoming work of our city and help make that connection. So thank you for helping us create that. Next, I'd like to invite Kevin Price. I think and T-PAC, come on up. So, Kevin Price is General Manager for Valley Metro. Ron Parker is Assistant General Manager. And Laura, Dr. Laura Hartman, wearing two hats, really, with Bragg, bus rider of Roanoke Advocacy Group, and a member of our Transit Passenger Advisory Committee. This is why we use acronyms, right? Okay. This proclamation is in honor of Try Transit Week. Whereas public transportation is a vital service that provides mobility and accessibility to all residents, connecting people with jobs, education, healthcare, and recreational opportunities; whereas public transit systems throughout the United States help reduce traffic congestion, improve air quality, and decrease our collective carbon footprint by offering a sustainable alternative to driving; whereas in the Roanoke Valley, residents can explore convenient options, including fixed route service, the downtown Starline Trolley, Smartway commuter routes to the New River Valley, and Metroflex evening and Sunday service, as well as Star Transit. Whereas many individuals have never tried public transportation and may not be aware of the positive impact it can have on their daily commute and the broader community; and whereas promoting and celebrating public transit fosters community engagement and encourages environmentally friendly and cost-effective commuting choices that benefit all; now therefore I, Joseph Elkhob, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, urge all residents to consider using public transportation during this week and beyond, and do hereby proclaim September 16 through 20, 2025, throughout this great eight-time All-America City, as Try Transit Week. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Elkhob, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This is also, from me, a great opportunity to share the diversity of our transit system. From the Smartway, Smartway Express, Smartway Amtrak, Starline Trolley, Metroflex, Star, and now all-electric buses, we have a very diverse transit system, and we have a transit mode for anyone, whether you're going to work, whether you're going to a medical apartment, or you just want to be out on the town after hours or on Sundays. We've come a long way in transit, and we plan on going further. But this gives us an opportunity to share what's out there. So I encourage you all to take, just take a sample ride, if it's not just going downtown to lunch on the free trolley and seeing what's going on, or if you want to take a longer trip, if you want to go up to Blacksburg and visit the campus in, at Virginia Tech, Roanoke has an option for you. And for a transit of this size, that can be said, that's saying something. So, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Try Transit this week.
Maybe this side, there we go. Thank you. One, two, three. Thank you.
I have something to say. Some years back, we were doing interviews for an accountant in the Treasurer's Office, and we interviewed this young man that I really, really wanted to hire. And when I called him, he goes, "Well, you know, I really started thinking about this. That's a long commute from Blacksburg to Roanoke." And I said, "Oh, but I have, I have the plan for you, buddy." And I told him about the Smartway bus, and I said, "Just next week, come to Roanoke, try it." And he did, and guess what? We hired him. Unfortunately, he left us to move to Northern Virginia, but thank you for that, because we were able to hire somebody that could use that to get to Roanoke every day, and it was great. And then, on another note, when my children were younger, we wanted them to understand the importance and the privilege of having a car, and that some people didn't. So, during school break and the winter break, we would come shopping downtown, and we would use the bus. And, and they really got a good education on that. So, thank y'all for what you do and the services that you provide to all of our citizens.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate our bus system very much and all of the options that we have to get around town and to other destinations around the state and in southwest Virginia. So thank you, and I'm a huge supporter of public transportation, so look forward to continuing to support the bus system as best I can. And I want to especially give a shout out to the bus riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group and all the work that you do over these last five-plus years, three? Feels like five. Thank you for all of your work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Item three in our agenda today is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. The City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard, and all matters will be referred to the City Manager for response, recommendation, or report to the City Council as she may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do we have citizens signed up to speak today?
We do. We have five speakers. I'll call them two by two. Mary Slaughter and Barbara Dirk.
Ms. Slaughter here? Well, as the speakers are coming up, if you're new to speaking today, we do have a timer here on the podium. Green is go, yellow is you have one minute left, and red is please stop. And you will never be abruptly cut off. We'll ease you into the finish line. But everyone has three minutes today. So, Ms. Dirk, we welcome you.
I think if there were four speakers, then?
Yes. Good afternoon. I am Barbara Dirk, and I'd like to give you all a shout-outs for your shout-outs. I want to thank the Members of City Council that attended the Virginia Skyline Girl Scout Council Mental Health Summit. That was last Saturday, uh, Sunday. And thank you very much, because mental health is really important, and Girl Scouts are dealing with those issues. Now, let freedom ring. That, that the 250 celebration kickoff was in Virginia last January. Now, everybody knows that 250 is in 2026, but we are already celebrating. In Virginia, we say "America, made in Virginia." I'm here to talk about the American Constitution, because the Constitution Day is observed every year on September the 17th, and it commemorates the signing of the Constitution on September 17th, 1787. There were lots of, of books on government, governance that went into the development of our Constitution. Out of the Constitution, it was originally entitled Citizenship Day. Recent legislation has named it Constitution and Citizenship Day, and mandates that federally-funded schools and federal agencies provide instruction and information about the Constitution. That September 17th is Constitution Day, September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. That we have a, a emphasis is for citizens to be responsible for protecting and defending the Constitution, to inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life. We encourage the study of historical events which lead, led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. So Constitution Week is a great time to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms that it gives us. One of the things that we're doing is, is on September 17th, at four o'clock, after they've signed the Constitution, the church bells rang, and, and that's what we want to do on Wednesday, September the 17th. And we're going to meet at Freedom Plaza, which is out front of the municipal building at the Roanoke Valley War Memorial. And at four o'clock, we're going to ring our bells. So come with us. We invite everyone to come and ring our bell. And if, this is a very wimpy bell. It's the Freedom Bell. My Freedom Bell would not sound like that. My Freedom Bell would go dum, dum, dum. So, so you can ring whatever bell that you want. We'd love for you to come ringing it with us. And next year, in September 17th, 2026, we hope that the city and every, all the citizens can participate in Constitution Day and Constitution Week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dirk.
Our next speaker is Adam Mastrangilo and John Donahue.
Welcome, Mr. Mastrangilo.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to address the Roanoke City Council regarding the hybrid canine ordinance. I'm Adam Mastrangilo. I live at 3528 Windsor Oak Circle, and I'm President of the Greater Dierly Neighborhood Association. As you may already know, on June 26, 2025, at 8:00 p.m., four hybrid canines were running large, running at large, attacked a deer in the yard of a resident on Mudlock Road in the Dierly neighborhood. Then at least one of those animals turned and attacked a resident's companion pet. After calling 911, Roanoke City Police, Sheriff, and Animal Control arrived, and for that, we are very grateful. The only injury that evening was the deer's fatal injury. Since June 26, the GDNA has been collecting data which it reported to the community at our July 31 meeting, summarizing, there have been five previous incidents involving these hybrid canines. The first two incidences on 10/01/2020, 10/22/21 were not reported. However, they involve dangerous dogs, dogs running at large, respectively, and they were from 35, 3580 Windsor Road Southwest. These, the, the next three incidences on 12/14/2021, 12/31/2021, and the spring of 2022 were reported. These incidents involve dangerous dogs, dogs running at large, and dogs running at large, respectively, and they also were from 3580 Windsor Road Southwest. Of the six incidents charged, of the six incidents, charges have been filed for two in the Roanoke City District Court. The court's disposition information shows dismissed for the first and not guilty for the second. Additionally, of these six incidences, two companion pets were viciously mauled, one in each incident. We keep hearing from the Dierly residents, "We're frightened and don't feel safe walking in our neighborhood." At the July 31st, 2025 GDNA meeting, over 120 individuals attended. A motion was unanimously passed that the GDNA supports the city of Roanoke's efforts to remove canine hybrids at 3580 Windsor Road Southwest from our neighborhood. As written, "This ordinance will remove the hybrid canines from 3580 Windsor Road Southwest. Thus, we support the ordinance." We are very grateful to the City of Roanoke for how quickly the solution to our urgent safety issue was being implemented. I thank Councilmember Powers for bringing this topic up at the 20, at the July 21 council meeting, and City Attorney Spencer for briefing council on the draft ordinance on August 4. In closing, I do ask, please make sure you provide the necessary resources for enforcement, i.e. code, law, and others, so that this ordinance can be properly implemented. We are, that's very important. From the RPD's website, it states, "The Roanoke Police Department constantly strives to protect and serve all members of our community." Well, for the past five years, the Greater Dierly community hasn't felt protected from these animals. Thank you for your time, consideration, and for your dedication to our city.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could make, I appreciate the kind words, but if I could just make one point, the ordinance was drafted to protect all citizens throughout the city.
Right.
It is not, nor will we ever, draft an ordinance to address any individuals. It is to protect the public at large.
Correct.
Like his last comments, this was to protect all citizens and take the best measures that we could to address the issue across the city.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue? Welcome.
Hello. How you guys doing today? I wanted to bring something to your attention that has to do with the Roanoke Rescue Mission. I stayed at the rescue mission for about three years. I've seen a lot of stuff down there as far as basically saying there's a black mold in the building. I've seen where the staff had basically, in some ways, promoted fights, because I worked up in the, in the dining hall down in the rescue mission. They also sit there and say that they have stuff where they can help residents get jobs, find a place to live, and now, there might be one or two that might get out of there through that, but ninety, about 95% of the people that are there, they don't get no help. And so basically, for me, I have to do everything myself. I had to get my own job, had to find my own place, and the way they run that place down there is not the way it's supposed to be ran. It seems like there's a lot of corruption going on down there, and like I said, I've seen a lot of violence go on down there, and staff members would not do nothing about it. And I appreciate your time for listening to me, and I hope something gets done about it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down today and sharing that.
The next two speakers, it's Scott Roper and Laura Hartman.
Welcome, Mr. Roper.
Yes, sir. I am here as well on behalf of the Roanoke Mission. Me and my wife was there for three years, and we had witnessed a lot of mental abuse. Sanitarity-wise, it was pretty bad, pretty bad. They made a point to where the children there were stripped of all their toys, stuff like that. They wasn't allowed to have them, for what reason? They didn't tell us. One girl that was there was asked to leave the mission because she changed her baby's diaper on her bed. That, it's, that's a little bit too, too far going. When I worked in the dining room, it was nothing but filth. I was there the other day, a couple days ago, and nothing's changed. That, the dining room has been literally scrubbed twice in three years that I've been there. The food that they served there, there's been instances where donuts and bagels and stuff had mold on them, and they pushed it on the people. I have myself personally experienced that, took it to the person in charge of the kitchen, and I was told to just go and sit down. When my wife had knee replacement, my wife, I was told not to help her, not to help her out of the car. If I was caught doing this, I would be relieved from the mission. And she was then told that if she was caught talking to me or me talking to her, we would both be out on the street. That's, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. They telling people that if you don't go to the, to chapel services, you will not have a bed. That's not what that place was made for. It was to help people get on their feet. Well, the people there, they have no hope. There's no hope for them because of this. And I think that it can be done better ways. Some of the, some of the staff there, they have registered sex offenders working there around children. I, for me, that's very appropriate. I, for me, that's very appropriate. They present themselves to the community as the heroes. That's not so. That's not so. And I was told, me and my wife was told one day, "It's time for us to leave and go find somewhere to live, get away from..." And lo and behold, we found a place to live. And we are so grateful for that. When Joy was on the board there, where she passed away, she didn't allow none of this. Joy ran a tight, tight ship, not only with the guests, but the employees. If bikes broke out into the dining room, the employees would take off. They would go. You've got children. You've got women here, all combined together in the middle of all this. And I just want to bring that to your attention. I brought this to your attention, Mr. Mayor, before at the park. And I was going to talk to you yesterday at church about it, by the way, I go to the same church you do. And, but if anything, please look into this and try to, you know, people have no hope. They feel that there's nothing there. And that's the reason why you have the problems there. People sleeping in the graveyard because they don't want to go there. They don't want to be, they'd rather be outside in a jungle atmosphere instead of anywhere it can be safe, if they want it that way, which the administration does not want it that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roper.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your perspective. Dr. Hartman, welcome.
Good afternoon. I bring you greetings from the bus riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group, where we like to say that buses are for everyone, and a great city deserves great transit. We're so excited about Try Transit Week, so thank you for supporting that. And I know you're all going to Try Transit this week. Please consider that a dress rehearsal for the Week Without Driving, which is coming up in two weeks. So you all may remember, in the summer, we gave you some invitations to participate in the Week Without Driving, and we've got some, just a copy of that to give you one more time in case you lost the first one. So our, our mayor Cobb has already agreed to participate in this week. Thank you so much, Mayor Cobb, for observing the Week Without Driving. So we're encouraging you to, that last week of September, early October, September twenty-ninth to October fifth, can you do it? It's a challenge, right? Can we go a whole week without driving ourselves? Now, the way the challenge works, you're allowed to get a ride from somebody. You're allowed to be part of a carpool. You're allowed to use a, you know, a ride share, like an Uber or a Lyft if you need to. But this is to help us understand how hard it can be to get around if driving is not an option. We gave Mayor Cobb a copy of this book called, "When Driving Is Not An Option," and we encourage all of you to take a look at that as well. And I should mention that biking and walking are, of course, great ways to get around during the week without driving as well. Bragg is working with Pedalsafe Roanoke on this initiative, and we, both organizations, encourage all of you to please consider observing the Week Without Driving with us. Now, a week might be a long time. If you can't handle a whole week, we'll take a day or two, whatever you can do. But we would love for you all, in particular, to be leaders to others in our community and showing the ways, that there are multiple ways to get around our city without necessarily having to drive your own car. We know that eleven percent of households in Roanoke City don't even own cars, don't have access to cars. So those households are always observing the Week Without Driving. And there are plenty of households not counted in that statistic where maybe there's two or three adults, but there's only one car for the whole household. So some people in that household also have to observe their days or weeks without driving. Driving is a great way to get around, but it has its downsides. So we're here to encourage the use of all these other modes, and of course, especially transit. So we're very grateful for Try Transit Week, this particular week. We want you to know some projects that we have in the works. One of them is we're working with Ride Solutions on creating a video about how to ride the bus. So keep an eye out for that. We'll be publicizing it as best we can. We hope that that resource will be helpful to some of our welcoming week populations as well. Anybody who's new to town and who needs to figure out how to ride the bus, or perhaps who just has never done it before and needs a little boost. So that's one project that we're working on. I also wanted to confirm, I didn't make the meeting, but I believe that we're also having free transit on Election Day. Is that right? Yes. So that's another opportunity to really get out there on the buses and go exercise your civic rights to vote. As we've said, a great city deserves great transit, and all of the support we can get for raising awareness of that transit will help to build the momentum towards continually improving it as well. So that's all for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers this afternoon?
No other speakers.
All right. Thank you. And thanks to everyone who came out today. We appreciate it. Our next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of the city council and are enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of the items. However, if discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Included in the Consent Agenda are four requests for closed meeting. I'm amending this to add one additional that was, I believe all of you have a copy of on the dais. One closed meeting is from my office to discuss the two thousand twenty-five Citizen of the Year Award process pursuant to Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A-ten Code of Virginia as amended. And three from the city attorney. One is to discuss a personnel matter regarding tenure of a council-appointed employee pursuant to Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A-one Code of Virginia. Another is to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by outside legal counsel involving the legal standards for financing of schools pursuant to Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A-eight Code of Virginia as amended. And the last is to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning an economic development project in the central part of the city of Roanoke pursuant to Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A-eight Code of Virginia. So with that addition, I'll ask if there's a motion second to approve the Consent Agenda. Move the Consent Agenda?
Second.
That was very simultaneous. Go with Councilman Volason and Councilwoman Powers. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the Consent Agenda is adopted. We'll move now into our regular agenda. We have no public hearings this afternoon. We have one item under petitions and communications, and that is discussion of the Roanoke City Council Code of Ethics and Conduct. This has come about, the council has had a, an operating Code of Conduct for a very long time. But as part of our strategic planning process that began this summer, we wanted to revisit this and revise it and update it and include not only a Code of Conduct, but a Code of Ethics. And that document was included in the agenda. But we wanted to be very transparent with citizens about the work we've been doing on this and how important it is to us as a council, not only with each other, but also with the people that we're elected to serve. And we've spent a lot of time reviewing this. I think everyone feels very good about what we have included in this document. But we wanted to provide an opportunity for council members to share any comments or add any discussion to this before we adopt it. So council, any, any items that you all would like to discuss related to this? Ms. Powers?
I'd just like to thank the city staff that I know that worked on this. I really like how you took the city charter and pulled a lot of that into this policy. And, you know, when I was in the treasurer's office, the Treasurers Association of Virginia has a ethics policy, and we have our, our staff sign it every year. And it's just a great opportunity for our citizens to know that we really care about making sure that we hold true ethics, that we respect each other. And I think everybody did a great job on this. And so I just want to thank the city staff that worked on this.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Other council members?
I hate to do this, but I just found a typographical error.
Well, now's the time.
On page seven, under removal, on the third line, it says, "Upon convection of certain misdemeanors." So unless we're baking that, I think it means conviction.
Convection is an interesting word. What, what section was that?
It's the last.
Oh, very last.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Oh, yes, that should be conviction.
Conviction.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Vice Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mayor, thank you to you and to the city attorney and all of the staff, everyone that worked on this. I think it's good to update this and be reminded of the importance of conducting ourselves ethically and with, you know, civility. I think in a time when so much of that is, it feels like is eroding in other places and spaces that it's important for us, I think, to say really clearly to our residents that we're going to lead with civility and respect. I think we agree, I think we agree on more than we disagree, but we will disagree on things sometimes. And I just think it's great. I appreciate the effort to remind us of the importance of what's laid out in here. So thank you to everyone that worked on it.
Thank you. All right. Well, I will entertain a motion with that one correction to adopt the Council Code of Ethics and Conduct in a second.
So move that as amended?
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Hagan and Councilwoman Sanchez-Jones. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and thank you all for your support and hard work on this. Our next item is reports of city officers and the city manager. We don't have any briefings this afternoon. No briefings?
No briefing.
Gosh, we get to jump right to comments from the city manager.
I know. Unbelievable, right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members. I have three comments today. Number one, the city of Roanoke is launching a comprehensive parking study to better understand current and future parking needs in our community, and we want input from the public to help guide this process. To support this efforts, effort, excuse me, we're hosting a public workshop on Monday, October twenty-seven, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Burgling Center in the Burgling Hall, located at seven-ten Williamson Road Northeast. This is a valuable opportunity for residents, businesses, and stakeholders to share their experiences and ideas around parking in Roanoke. We encourage everyone to attend, and we also have a project website where people can stay informed and participate. Number three, I'm sorry, number two. A community survey will be launching soon through that website. Number two, I'm sorry, I'm skipping a little bit. My apologies. The city of Roanoke Fleet Services Management has been ranked as the forty-second green fleet in the nation by the NAFA Fleet Management Association as part of the two thousand twenty-five Green Fleet Awards. This annual recognition honors fleets across North America that demonstrate exceptional leadership in sustainability and environmental services. So we are really excited and want to congratulate them on that. And the last and final comment is, I want to apologize as our overhead television is not working today. We're addressing the issue and hope to have it resolved as soon as possible, but we may not be able to get it up and running until next meeting. So we apologize for that. And that completes my comments for today.
Thank you, city manager. So again, reiterating that public input information session, that's on October twenty-seventh?
It is on October twenty-seventh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. at the Burgling Center in the Burgling Hall.
Okay, thank you. And, and we want to reiterate that. There are a lot of benefits to parking in the city, and there are a lot of challenges. And this is an opportunity to receive input from citizens in person. There's also access to a community survey that you can participate in, and we will share out the project website as well as information about this meeting. For those who may not know where Burgling Hall is when you park in front of Burgling Center, Burgling Hall is under the plaza. So there is elevator access to the left. There's also stair access right off the plaza, and there's plenty of parking there. So thank you for, for that great work. All right. We are going to move then into reports of committees, and we're going to, I always jump over that. Thank you, Peter. Public Matters Follow-up. I don't know why I keep skipping over that. Because it's important.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Ms. Hedrick to give us an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a long one today, so settle in. We are very grateful when residents come, and it is very nice as well to be able to report back and respond to the concerns that they bring. So we have a bit of a lengthy list this afternoon. Mr. Lovell was here to, at the last meeting, I believe, having issues with his neighbor's dog getting into his yard. He had recorded over a hundred and fifty instances in the last five years when this had happened. His dog and his fiancee were both bit during various incidences and needed medical attention. He stated that he had been in touch with the animal warden and had also filed charges with the magistrate's office without seeing a resolution to the issue. I spoke with Sergeant Knoll, who supervises the Animal Control and Protection Unit through the police department. She was very familiar with this case, as were most of her animal wardens. They are continuing to follow it very closely. They've documented the calls. They also have been in touch with the Commonwealth's attorney, but unfortunately, as the code is currently written, there's really nothing they can charge beyond a class-four misdemeanor. She said that, that Mr. Lovell had filed charges. They had gone to court, but unfortunately, those charges were dismissed in court. So currently, there's really nothing beyond continuing to file charges that can be done. But Sergeant Knoll said that they were very familiar with it. They're continuing to monitor the situation and will respond as much as they are able to do. Additionally?
Ms. Hedrick, can I pause you there for a second?
Yes, please.
Is there, is this a matter of strengthening the code? To, I mean, adding more teeth to this code? I'm trying to understand, you know, if, if the problem persists and there's no resolution, you know, what options do we have?
Right.
We're, we're going to be talking about our legislative agenda here in a few minutes, and, and these are some areas where it's helpful to know if, if, if we need to advocate for these kinds of changes. I'm just curious.
I don't know, I don't know if Ms., how familiar Mr. Spencer is with the dogs-at-large piece of the code. I know that's maybe not something that we look at often. I know that was the concern with, the only charges that were applicable in this case were the dogs-at-large, which is the class-four misdemeanor. I don't know if that's something that can be amended or not. It's definitely something that we could look into.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into it.
They are prohibited in our code. It's a class four misdemeanor. So, as I understood, this was two dogs that were fenced in, biting each other through the fences. So, but we have a prohibition against dogs running at large.
Okay.
And I am also very willing to follow up with Sergeant Knoll and the animal warden that has been on the case and try to figure out, are there other instances that we're just not aware of that could potentially carry other charges? I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but I can definitely follow up with that and see if there's anything that can be done.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And just for reference, it is part of what is being amended and has been reviewed by a Commonwealth Attorney's Office to try to strengthen it as much as possible tonight's ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
The next matter, Dr. Chubb Wilson shared that part of her neighbor had fenced in her property while she was hospitalized. I know that that particular instance has been looked into, but her concern was more that this was happening to other, especially elderly residents as they were hospitalized or in assisted living or those kinds of facilities. Nothing currently exists that allows those properties to be monitored, but I have started a conversation with the Department of Planning, Building, and Development to see if perhaps that's something, whether there's a form that residents can fill out or their family members can fill out that would just kind of alert us to the fact that their properties weren't currently, there was no one currently living there, that we would be able to send folks out and just keep an eye, make sure everything was as it should be. So we've started that conversation. I don't have a very firm report back on that one, but it is in the works. Also, we have heard a couple of different times about the man's property on Tenth Street, some of the issues that have been going on there. This one took quite a bit of research, but in speaking with several departments, several city staff, it seems that when the Tenth Street project was completed, the city did offer to install the concrete driveway at the property, but the offer was declined. There may be misunderstanding around that. The circumstances may have changed, but from everything I've been able to gauge, the city did offer to build that driveway, and that offer was declined at the time. Mr. Howard spoke at the previous council meeting about...
Hold on.
Sure, yes, please. Sure, sure.
So what year was that in, do you recall off the top, like, how long ago?
It has been a while, Mr. Mayor, if you remember.
Yeah, it's been quite a while ago, because it was when Mr. Stovall was here, because he was able to give me a little bit of background on that. So, they worked very, very closely with Dr. Manns, and she did decline.
And so for instances such as this, is there a form, like, I mean, I don't know, like, against medical advisement form, but like, an against, like, city advisement form, like, hey, we're offering to do this? Like, if you don't want it, like, you have to sign here where we can store that? Because my follow-up question is, I guess, where does that leave the current situation? Like, is it just kind of, like, done because at some point it was declined? Or, I guess, do we have a form now? And then to make sure we're documenting, and where does that leave this situation?
So, your first question in terms of, was there a form where she signed saying that she declined the work? If I kind of summarize what you've stated, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into that. The second question is, once she declines, you know, we cannot go on her property. So we wouldn't be able to do anything as her property. So, you know, as the owner, once she declines, then, yeah, that would be it.
Okay. I had a follow-up. I thought Ms. Manns was also talking about a sewer line issue that was happening, and I wanted to know what's going on with that part of things.
Sure, and I do not have the specific details. I did speak with Mr. Campbell, and I know that they went out and inspected the property. And from everything, everything they can tell from a city side, it's as it should be. And I don't know if there are additional drainage issues on her property or something like that, but I know he, they went and looked from what we are responsible for as the city. And there's, it's as it should be. So, like I said, I can get the specifics. I was mostly focusing on the driveway in this, but I can look back into the sewer line issue. Sorry, I can't, I can't talk and write at the same time, or I'll end up writing what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Sure. So this is a happier, we actually have a resolution to this one. Mr. Howard had shared his concern that the pink tags that are put on bulk and brush set-outs may blow away. They may not still be stuck to the piles of brush and those kinds of things. So I actually had a meeting with Mr. Haynesworth and our communications team, and we are in the process of creating door hangers that will deal directly with that. And a couple of other, for lack of a better term, the violation tags, the kinds of feedback they have to give to folks around their bulk and brush. We're working on that. And we're also going to launch a social media-type campaign just to remind folks what the regulations are around bulk and brush, and also to say, you may see this door hanger that will kind of give you feedback on what was not done correctly and what you need to do moving forward. And the last one, Mr. Githier was here, speaking about flooding in the Fairland neighborhood. He was concerned because their home values have decreased as a result of the flooding, but their taxes and their insurance have gone up because of needing the flood insurance. So again, I spoke with Mr. Campbell. He said that Ian Shaw, who's our stormwater manager, actually went to the property the day of that council meeting, met with Mr. Githier and the co-owner of the property. The house unfortunately is in the FEMA floodplain for Tinker Creek. So there, it's not as simple as just creating better drainage in the area. It is in a documented floodplain. This was also directly after the August 21 storm, which was an unusual amount of rainfall in a short amount of time. And it was in the area that saw the highest rainfall totals in the city. So Mr. Shaw and his team discussed with Mr. Githier the possibility of including this property in a future application for acquisition of repetitive loss properties. That is a grant period that only opens periodically, and it is not currently available. But they are going to be considering, they were, sorry. They are willing to consider this property moving forward. So when that grant period opens up again, they will continue to be in touch with the property owners to see if there's something that they can pursue in that regard. And that is all.
Thank you. Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Do you know when that grant period opens back up?
I don't, no, I feel like today I have none of the responses to your follow-up questions. I don't know. Mr. Campbell may have more information, but I know he said it's something that FEMA, I believe that FEMA does. So it's only every now and then. I don't know if there are specified dates or if they just open it on a rotating basis.
And you have this gentleman on, like, a contact list, so that when it opens up, we'll proactively flag it for him? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move to reports of committees. And we are going to recess our council meeting for a couple of minutes to confirm that our guest, who will be joining us virtually, is able to join us. Well, she is able to, but we're going to confirm that everything's hooked up. And then, at that time, Vice Mayor McGuire, who chairs our legislative committee, will call that meeting to order. So we will wait for a signal that we're good to go, and until that time, we're in recess. So if you need a bathroom break.
Okay, welcome, everyone, to the 2025, the first of our legislative committee meetings. We will start, I'll ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Volison?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Ms. Appel?
Here.
Ms. Trigg?
Here.
And Chairman McGuire?
Here. All right, a quorum is present. Thank you, Ms. McPoy. I will open us up really quickly by just saying thank you to a number of people, to our school board colleagues for joining us today. Dr. Seibert, thank you for being here, to all of my colleagues on council who submitted information. And, yeah, please come up. And I also want to thank Deputy City Manager Sam Roman for his help leading this process. And I'm really delighted to be joined, we're delighted to be joined by Margaret Rockwell with McGuire Woods. And so thank you all very much. We are looking forward to getting our legislative agenda together, working with our friends on the school board, and getting the next step moving along so that we can get this in the hands of our legislators and make sure that they have a firm grasp on what our priorities are in the upcoming legislative session. What I want to do first, if I can, is call on Dr. Seibert. If you want to come up and say a few words about where you all are on the school board side of this. And then, after that, we'll turn it over. I'll call on Ms. Rockwell.
Yes, good morning, Vice Mayor McGuire, Chair of the Committee, Mayor Cobb, members of council. It is an honor to be here on behalf of Dr. White. On the school division side, the superintendent has a policy of governance of legislative committee, the PGL Committee. It's a superintendent's committee. It includes the two board members who serve on your legislative committee, our Chair, Ms. Appel, and Board Member Trigg. And so we have things underway. We have six primary positions, anchor in local control, school safety and security, commitment to schools serving all students, governance and budget, employee compensation and assessment accountability modernization. Those are the six overarching topics. But our PGL Committee meeting actually meets this Wednesday, so we're happy to be here at the headwaters' conversation. Historically, the board has gone through its process. Currently, they anticipate adopting the board's legislative positions probably at the October 14 school board meeting. Historically, then, those have come to you, and you've incorporated them by reference into your legislative positions and priorities. The one thing we do want to make sure is on your calendar, however, is we're looking at Tuesday, November 25, as our Take Your Legislature School Month event. We're looking to host that at William Fleming High School and have our legislators and our local elected officials there as well. So those calendar informations should already be in the hands of you and your team. We look forward to that. We're thankful to be here today and any support we can provide.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seibert. Thanks again to our friends from the school board for being here. And I will now call on Margaret Rockwell with McGuire Woods Consulting to give us an overview of the development of our 2026 legislative program. Can you hear us, Margaret?
I can hear you. Hello, everybody. Hi, I can see myself on that big screen, so I'm going to start sharing my screen and so you can start seeing this presentation. And in that presentation, we have a bit of an agenda of what I'll be covering today. So let me go ahead and share my screen. All right. Thank you for your patience. All right, now, it looks like you can, okay, so you all can see this, okay? Can you just confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, well, hello, everybody. My name is Margaret Rockwell. I am the Vice President here at McGuire Woods Consulting, and I work with Preston Bryant on the Infrastructure and Economic Development Team. I'm also an attorney with McGuire Woods, and I kind of play a dual role of, I guess I wear both hats and have a great time here. So I'm really excited to be here, and Preston will be joining you for your next meeting on legislation. But he had another commitment right now, so I'm here today. But we have both prepared together for this presentation, and I'm looking forward to giving it to you all. So, great to meet you. Let's just go through what this presentation is going to entail. So first, we're going to talk a bit about where we are in the political world in Virginia, as well as what the General Assembly is going to look like this year. What's the situation? What's the current circumstances around our kind of political world here? And then after that, we'll talk about some of the deadlines that you all should be aware of as you continue planning your legislative program. And then lastly, we have, and I have, I believe you all have, a list of legislative priorities. And I'll be facilitating a discussion of prioritizing those priorities into two different buckets. One will be actions that you all are hoping to take a, you know, an actual distinct stance on and present a bill or try to introduce a bill or a budget amendment on. And one will be, the other bucket is where you all will be expressing your support for different policies as other stakeholders bring them to the attention of legislators during the General Assembly session. So let's get started on this preview of the 2026 General Assembly session. Just to, you know, set the stage of where we are. This is Governor Yonkin's last year in office. 2025, this past General Assembly session was his, was the last legislative session that he is governor. The 2026 session begins January 14, and the new governor is sworn in on January 17. So we can expect in 2026 for the new governor to be fully present throughout the session. Last year, well, I guess, I say last year, last legislative session in 2025, there were just, there were a few dominant issues. It wasn't, it wasn't a major session at that point. You had some concerns about... You had some concerns about the economy and where our budget was heading. And so, I think it was more so of a conservative push to just maintain stability. Then now, we have in 2025, a number of elections, as you all are well aware, governor, lieutenant governor, Attorney General, and then all House seats, 100 House seats. Of those House seats, we have about a dozen that are going to be competitive. And noting specifically that those are going to be in these areas of the state, Fredericksburg, Chesterfield, Herhainrico area, Petersburg, and then Chesapeake. So you have that aspect as well. And then lastly, you have a new biennial budget planning. So that has already started. State capital projects have been submitted for consideration. And this is the next two-year budget. I want to stop here quickly and talk a bit about how this looks, how the budget looks. Because I know it can be kind of confusing when you have a governor exiting and a new governor coming in, whereas you have a budget being introduced by that first governor. So what's going to happen is Governor Yonkin's going to present his budget in December, his proposed budget. And then he'll leave in January, and the next governor will come in. By January, or around January, that's when you have, both chambers will be editing or amending the budget that Governor Yonkin proposes. So there'll be a long list of amendments. And then at that point, you will have the new governor amending those amendments as well. So we're looking at kind of three different stages of the budget until we reach a final budget at the end of session. So I just wanted to go through that because I know that can be somewhat confusing. So going on to the next slide, just wanted to, you know, point out that with all of these different changes, it's going to be a fresh start. We'll have a newly elected House, we'll have three different positions in the executive branch that will be newly elected. It's not clear whether, you know, at this point, whether it's all going to be one party or not, so we're watching that. And then, like I just explained, we're going to be going into a new biennial budget. One thing to consider here, just kind of pivoting off of what I just explained regarding those three different stages, another thing to consider about those three different stages is that you're also looking at three different lists of priorities for each stage. So you have Governor Yonkin's priorities in the initial budget that is being introduced. Then you have the appropriators' priorities from the House and Senate in the amendments that they provide. And then you have the governor's amendments as well, and those priorities that the new governor will implement. And so, there's a question at hand of, you know, how will all of these go together? How will the appropriators treat the new governor's budget priorities? How will the governor, the new governor, integrate the appropriators' priorities? And what will happen to the submissions or the proposals provided by Governor Yonkin? At the same time, it's a lot of moving parts here, you have the federal issues that is also influential in what comes into the budget. So there's, you know, big concerns right now about job and budget cuts at the federal level. And there's also concerns about how budget cuts made at the federal level are going to impact the amount of money that Virginia will have to put aside to fill the gaps that might arise in specifically Medicaid and workforce and K-12. And in fact, there was a statement made by Luke Torian lately, talking about this a bit more, about how, you know, we're looking at a lot of cuts. And he stated that there's going to require a minimum of 1.8 billion in new general funds to make up for these cuts and to provide these additional resources. And the priorities there are going to be the K-12 system, and then health and long-term care recipients in the Medicaid program. So just wanted to provide that well-rounded understanding of all of the different pressure points, I would say, of what we're going to be looking at this, come this December and January and February. So let's look at what this General Assembly session is going to look like. This is a quote-unquote "long" session, so 60 days. And like we've already gone through, there's going to be a new governor, there will be a newly elected House. And we have many different areas that will be shaping Virginia politics. We have the governor's agenda, we have, you know, how the election turned out and what that turned out, and what that reflects about Virginia stakeholders' priorities. Then you have the immense amount of budget cuts and job cuts that we've all seen, and a new budget. So we will see, this is a, you know, day by day, it will be, we'll be learning more as we continue on. So that's something that we're watching as well. But just to take a look at where we are currently, we do have a divided government in way of, you have the legislative branch is mostly in Democratic control. Both the House and the Senate has a slight majority on the Democrat side. And then the executive branch is in Republican control. And so you have Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Attorney General are Republicans. Another thing to consider as we look at the politics of our state is that in the General Assembly, the senior leadership is concentrated in representatives or delegates and senators from both Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads. And we think this is an important note to point out, that you have 13 of the 14 committee chairs in the House of Delegates are from either of those two regions, and eight of the 10 committee chairs in the Senate are from either of those two regions. So there, I think that's an important area to consider as we think about bringing legislation forward and think about the influences in the background. Going on to the economy and jobs, let's take a look at what is really a huge factor coming up in this legislative session. So first of all, looking at Virginia's FY '25 year-end surplus, you can tell that it's a lot lower than it has been in previous years. Part of this is that the way that the Yonkin administration has categorized surplus has excluded this 1.7 billion in cash cushion. So depending on how you look at it, it might not be as low as 572 million, but at the same time, it is a different, it's different than the other three years. You might want to ask about the FY '23 year-end surplus, this being 3 billion. This was the year that it took a long time for the budget to be agreed upon by our government. So a lot of different, a different timeline resulted in different revenues being captured. And so it was a bit of a different year there. But overall, we're in that 1 to 2 billion range, and then you have this past year. And then in addition to that, we're looking at our unemployment trends. And this has been, the percentage of unemployment has been going up month after month in Virginia. The last month we have is July at 3.6%. The national average as of August is 4.3%. But it looked like it's projected in Virginia to reach 4.2% in 2025 and 4.6% in 2026. So, you know, these are some sobering bullet points here. There is inflationary concerns.
Ms. Rockwell.
Concerns over us. Is that my, is somebody trying to ask me a question before I move on?
This is Councilman Volason. I just wanted to ask about the unemployment trends. You know, we have a lot of federal workers that took the buyouts. Do we know when those buyouts are going to hit?
That is a really great question. I don't have that answer at this moment, but I will write it down and get back to you on that, when the buyouts will hit. So.
Thank you.
Sure, yes. Okay. Yes, thank you for that. I'm not aware of the date of when that would be reflected, but that's a really great question that I'll return with an answer. Are there any other questions before I move forward?
No, I think we're good, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So, yeah, so, you know, it's kind of mixed here. You know, inflation in Virginia is below the US average. And it looks like GDP will remain positive for the rest of 2025, but there's concern in 2026 of economic growth, as well as the labor market declining. I just touched a bit on the rest of 2025 and going into 2026. Oops, I'm sorry. Oh, boy, how do I go backwards? All right. And I touched a little bit about this, anticipated budget decision points and drivers. Some of the main ones are listed here, but I want to highlight the ones that Senator Torian, or, sorry, Delegate Torian has recently talked about. And that is Medicaid, potential increases in employment application, and K-12 schools. But yeah, but all of these are on the minds of many as we move forward in the budget process.
Ms. Rockwell?
And then, yes.
A quick question, what is WQIF?
Yes, that is the Water Quality Improvement Fund. So I think this touches on a lot of the infrastructure. There were some vetoes this past year in the budget that involved this type of infrastructure. And so, we're looking at, moving forward, how is that going to be addressed in the upcoming budget?
Thank you.
So apart from the budget, they're up top, there's a lot of things we'll be reading about this General Assembly session. And we've listed kind of the key ones here. And just as a general, when you open the newspaper, from January to March, you're going to be seeing a lot of these topics in the articles, of what people are bringing forward, what the debates will be about, and what we'll be seeing as either bills that come to the governor's desk, bills that almost make it, or bills that die pretty quickly. So let's move forward to the milestones and deadlines. I've given you an understanding, hopefully, and please feel free to ask more questions as we move along, but I've sought to give you an understanding of where we lie currently, where the circumstances are regarding politics, General Assembly. Now let's look at procedurally what we need to be looking at timeline-wise as we move forward towards the General Assembly session. So we are in September, I'm using my cursor, I'm not sure if you can see that, but September, September. So I would like to turn your attention here to these second and third green bullet points. At this point, you all have already surveyed departments for issues and concerns, and you're at the point where you're reviewing and prioritizing legislative initiatives that you might wish to pursue. And then also, you know, we're also considering budget ideas, budget concerns, things like that, that we might want to think about as well. And then in September, later this month, that's the time to start discussing informally issues with your delegation that may be of interest to the city in order to get early feedback. So this is, I want to point out, again, informal, these are informal discussions to kind of introduce ideas and understand what the feedback is from them. In October, you'll be finalizing your legislative program. This is when Preston will be presenting again and talking with you all at that meeting, and then transmitting those priorities to the delegation on a more formal basis in writing. Then November, you'll be starting to meet with the delegation to present the legislative program. And end of November is when the council and delegation begin working together on bill drafting. So here are some specific dates. I want you to look at this just because there's a lot of dates here. And for me, seeing a lot of dates on the screen all at once can be a little overwhelming. So I would like to separate it into two main groups. The second and third bullet point can be kind of pushed together into one. You have, this is for the pre-filing period of time, November 17th to December 1st. This is when legislators can begin pre-filing their legislation, they have until the 1st. And this is all means they get all of their legislation over to the Department of Legislative Services for them to begin drafting the bills and beginning the back-and-forth editing process between DLS and the legislator. Come, the next kind of group is December 31st through January 13th. This is really the heavy editing period. So December 31st is the time when the legislators must receive that final draft that DLS has created. And then they request redrafts, do corrections. And then by January 13th, all of the final drafts from DLS have to be available to legislators. The next day is when the General Assembly convenes. So just as a, somewhat of a general overview of what we are looking at with dates, November's the big month when things really start moving. So at this point, we want to start talking about the potential issues in your legislative program. And what we'd like to facilitate here during this conversation is reviewing the ideas and concerns that you all received, but also have, and then deciding how to prioritize these different issues that have come to light. Down below, you can see the two buckets there that we've named categories. So you have the first one, issues that require a member of the delegation to introduce a bill or a budget amendment. And the second bucket is the position. So issues that don't require an actual introduction of a bill or amendment, but are important to support, you know, publicly. And just a note here that the top priority, we recommend being city-specific and regional issues going forward. So at this point, I'm going to close out my screen and stop sharing, and then we can all begin talking as a group. If there are any questions that you'd like to ask about the presentation, please feel free now. Otherwise, I do have some, well, I have legislative priorities here in front of me that I received and happy to go through them and help facilitate that prioritization.
Thank you, Ms. Rockwell. Before we do that, does anyone have any questions, including our legislative committee members in the audience, Ms. Trigg or Ms. Appel? Okay, I think we're good, just wanted to check. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So what I have in front of me is a list of legislative priorities that Preston and folks from Roanoke have discussed, but it hasn't, I don't, these aren't, nothing's decided, it seems. So hopefully, we can talk about them. Let's see. Vice Mayor McGuire, or Chairman McGuire, do you have a copy of these priorities as well?
I do, and all of the council members have a copy, do you, do our...
Okay, fantastic. I wanted to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing. Is there any way by chance that the camera could be facing members of the council instead of the screen with my face on it? I would love to be able to look at you all. I see you, hello! For the first time.
Hello.
Okay. All right. Oh, that's really great.
A little bit better?
Thank you so much. That's, well, yeah, I will go back and forth, I think. You can see what I see on my screen below, but as long as I can see some people, that makes it better than this.
We have one of those owls.
I know, it's tough.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I am opened.
It's okay.
Well, yeah, I am open, I mean, we have compiled here all of the suggested ideas from all of our council members that put items forward, and then what I did was marry that with our legislative agenda from 2025, from this last legislative session, and I took out a couple, I think just one thing that was redundant, and that was the Director of Real Estate Valuation. So, that's what you're looking at, are the ideas that we've submitted, and this does need to be, I appreciate the explanation, clarification of dividing this into actions and positions, and then we'll, and this is not put into any kind of prioritization order right now in terms of topic, housing, public safety, economic development, it's just broken out by category. So, that's what everyone is looking at. That's what we have submitted, plus the previous legislative agenda.
Vice Mayor, I have one question. Does this include information from our departments as well?
I believe it does. That's what we're saying.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes, I believe it does.
May I ask?
Yes, we received only one from the...
Public Works.
Public Works.
Okay. Yeah, it does. Thank you.
And that's another point that I wanted to discuss, too, is that you all did receive this one regarding smart scale, which I think is worth a discussion, and then we can kind of go into the bigger list of legislative priorities. Would that be okay? Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. So, I have that also in front of me, and so, this is the request for legislation from the Department of Public Works to refine the strategy for smart scale. And there's a few different priorities here that was explained in the submission, including expanding the scoring to capture a larger amount of consideration for economic development, resolving fragmented priority rating system, a higher technical support, or not H-I-R-E, but a greater amount of technical support, improving congestion scoring methodology, introducing the project context value factor, and then possibly an additional consideration would be aligning, alignment with the state code. So, it's very thorough, which I think is great. I think that, I know that Preston has talked a bit about the concerns with bringing over a smart scale legislative priority into the legislative branch. And now, that's what I want to get into first, which is, the way that the smart scale legislation was created, was, before this happened, before the smart scale legislation, you had all the different legislators throughout the state trying to prioritize the different projects around their regions. And it ended up being, as you can imagine, too many cooks in the kitchen, and it was just, nothing really could get done. So, the smart scale legislation passed in 2014, and it purposely put the ability to score smart scale into the Commonwealth Transportation Board. It left them the ability to prioritize that plan and process for smart scale. And so, it changed it over to sort of an administrative process versus a legislative process. And the CDB, so the Commonwealth Transportation Board, I'm going to refer to as CCB. The CCB established the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment, which is referred to as OIPi, O-I-P-I. And that's the administrative arm of the CCB, or for smart scale. So, you have a few different entities here that work together to create the smart scale prioritization program and the scoring process. Over time since 2014, there have been numerous legislative attempts to change the smart scale criteria. Routinely, these bills are defeated. It seems that a lot of the General Assembly efforts currently that have recently been made to change the criteria, has been defeated and rejected with the thinking that there should not be, we should not be going back to a time when the General Assembly was extremely involved in transportation project planning. OIPi just went through a new round of administrative changes to the criteria a few months ago in preparation for round six of the prioritization process, which will occur in, sorry, round six is in 2025. And the next application process for round seven will start in 2026, and that happens for June 2027 approvals. So, the overall, oh, and then one more concern that I need to explain as well, is that there is a concern that, do you remember earlier in my presentation, I talked about the committee chairs in both the House and the Senate, and how they come from one of two areas? Yes. There's a concern that, you know, if Roanoke were to submit a smart scale prioritization process change, that that could be, that legislation or proposed legislation could be taken under the wing of other legislators that also represent other areas of the state, and amended, transformed to either benefit another area of the state more or equally, but basically, it would, there would be a possibility of it, of the control coming out of this region's hand and into another region's hand. And so, those are the two concerns that we, as lobbyists and consultants, have with, when we see smart scale proposals or changes to the prioritization process, that either one, it will be flat-out rejected due to the legislature's position on keeping it out of the legislature, or two, that it could be kind of taken under a different set of priorities from a different region. And so, some questions that we would encourage you all to ask is, looking at, has there been engagement with CCB and OIPi? Has there, and this is, I don't know the answers to these, this is really a question for you all to consider, is, or a few different questions to consider, which is, has there been some type of white paper, white paper type of analysis for the region or the projects that you all, or that has been possibly short-changed, that you, or, you know, the city or the region feels has been short-changed by smart scale criteria? Has there been some sort of analysis there? Has there been outreach to OIPi staff, for instance, to discuss these findings, or these beliefs, or analyses that have occurred? And then, has the city or region made recommendations to OIPi and conducted outreach to CCB? And the reason why we ask these questions is because it's become clear that there's a big push to maintain these processes within the administrative side. And Preston recommends, and I recommend, looking into that route in the beginning, or maybe exploring that type of outreach first, to get feedback from CCB and OIPi. But again, I don't know the answers to the questions I just asked, so this is kind of the first discussion topic that I thought might be good to address.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Rockwell. Councilmember Volason has a comment, maybe a question, maybe both.
Kind of to speak on what you're talking about right now, I sit on the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, and so, we've actually had discussions with OIPi, and we've had Dr. Smoot from the CCB come in and talk with us about smart scale. You know, I think the majority of the projects were in Richmond this year. Roanoke was not the only one that didn't get any projects. I believe Northern Virginia didn't get any as well. So, I think there's a bit of a push from not just us, but others to maybe change this. It seems like when they were doing smart scale, it was Richmond's ability to leverage some of their transit authority, or their transportation authority tax money to help reduce the cost of those smart scale projects. You know, we tried to do smaller asks this time around, because we thought maybe that would be a better way of doing it than asking for big projects. And so, that didn't work either, so it kind of left the TPO in this kind of weird space of, we don't really know what to do. We've tried one way, we've tried the other. You know, the only other thing that I personally think is that we have an authority, a transportation, the ability to create a transportation authority here in the Roanoke region, and, you know, if we are going to compete with Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads, that we might have to actually implement that to help buy down some of these projects. So, that's kind of where we are on the smart scale side of things. I do agree with your assessment that if we were to put in something right now, that I think Northern Virginia would be very happy to join us on that and then take it from us. And so, I'm of the mindset that we shouldn't go for the smart scale changes quite yet. Let's try and figure out another way, and also to make sure that we're advocating more with other parts of our state, because as you know, Roanoke is kind of alone out here. We've got that one other committee chair, and that's Sam Rasool, who's the Education Chair.
Thank you for that. Yes, that's, it's great context to understand. May I ask, and this might not be available to me to know at this point, but is there, can you tell me what the other jurisdictions are that have pushed for a change similar to what you all are seeking?
In our area, or in, yeah, in our area, it's the jurisdictions that are in the urban area that are the TPO, it's Roanoke, Roanoke County, Salem, Vinton, Ross, am I missing any?
Otter.
Oh, Bodotac County.
Okay. No, that's helpful. I wasn't sure if it was, you all, we were talking about the TPO specifically of that region or a broader area, so that's good to know.
Yeah, and also, I guess a good thing to, the best advocate for us in transportation in this area is typically Delegate Austin out of Bodotac.
Thank you for that. Okay, and that, I think this is, this is a good start to the conversation, and I think this is certainly, tell me one more thing. Have you all brought this up with the Roanoke delegation at this point yet?
I don't believe we have. I think maybe Terry Austin is aware of it, but that's about it at this point. So, it'll be something to talk about with our legislators when we meet with them.
Yeah. Going back to the presentation I gave and the initial outreach that should be initiated around now, that would be a topic certainly to bring up, to just even just get feedback on ideas for moving forward, kind of like what you talked about. But obviously, everything that we talk about today, I'm also bringing back to Preston, and so, we'll come back with ideas as well.
I also wanted to, Ms. Rockwell, just note, I think that this really is hinting at the larger question that the state needs to answer, which is, how are we going to support road infrastructure when we have a decrease in gas tax? And I think this is, you know, just a symptom of that issue, where we're not having enough money to do all the transportation projects around the state. So, I would suggest that we advocate for them to come up with a new method of funding transportation projects.
Thank you, Councilmember Volason. I'm sorry, Ms. Rockwell, I also wanted, Mr. Roman, do you or Mr. Campbell have anything you wanted to add or ask about this piece on smart scale and the proposal that was submitted? Just wanted to give you the chance if so.
No, sir. I've already spoken with Ross, and we don't have anything to add. Everything that we have discussed, obviously, was already discussed here today.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Rockwell, were you going to say something else about, on this topic?
No. I was, Jenna, thank you for that last comment that you made.
Great, okay. We did have one other question. I will pass it to Councilmember Sanchez Jones.
Good afternoon, Ms. Rockwell. I would like to know if we could include 911 operators as first responders on our legislative agenda.
Can you repeat the question?
Can we add the 911 operators to be considered first responders?
Is that a, you mean, so how they're categorized?
Yes. I mean, after all, they are the first ones to respond to...
Yeah, I don't know, that's a good question. I don't know how that would, what the current...
Currently, they're not, yeah.
They're not.
They're treated differently, and I think the thought is if they are responders, that means they might get more mental health days and things like that, that are given to those folks.
I don't have any objection to that idea. Would be glad to add it for further discussion, if that's something...
Yeah, add it under public safety.
Thank you. And so, the idea is re-categorizing 911 operators as first responders? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I've added that to the list. Have you all heard of that same idea being introduced anywhere else in the state? Or is that, is that specific to a concern in Roanoke?
It's throughout the state. Mr. Roman, do you have any information to give us?
Through the appropriate professional organizations that certainly E-911 across the state are part of, this has been a topic that they have taken up, and I don't know that it has moved forward as an introduction into the General Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Roman.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to note that for future discussions on the topic, if we are to see that during the General Assembly session, then when we are considering buckets, which bucket to put that into, that's good to know, that it's, it would be an issue that we might hear about throughout the state versus just a few jurisdictions. So, I've added that to my list, and we can reflect that in the future redone list later on. So, let me just check in on time, because at this point, it would be great to be able to go through some of these other priorities, and housing, public safety, transportation, sustainability, economic development, and budget, civil liberties, and good governance, but that's going to take some time. So, just checking in on where we are with that, with timing-wise. Do we have enough time to go through these?
We are, I don't, one moment. Do we have a timestamp?
So, we have four closed sessions. I'm not sure the length of time those will require. I would say at a minimum, an hour.
So, we would maybe like to wrap up in the next 30 minutes to an hour?
Fifteen to thirty.
Oh, great, okay.
Fifteen to thirty minutes, I'm told, requested.
Chairman McGuire?
Yes, sir.
I might add at this point, perhaps, this is a good point, now that we have all of the issues listed, perhaps this is a good time for everyone to digest what those things are on the list, and then offer their thought process to the collective body. So, as we come back, again, we do have another meeting on October 6th. We can come back and further this conversation, but it won't be a conversation of, you know, trying to decide where we are. You all will have that individual opportunity to offer that input to the collective body, and then perhaps come back.
I agree with that, and I also think that if we can come back with them kind of numbered, like our own kind of personal, hey, I think, you know, for housing, these are my three, you know, for public safety, these are my three or my two, and then we can each have them numbered, and then from there, the legislative committee can then actually formulate it, and then kind of clean it up and have it ready for us to vote on soon, so.
I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Roman. Thank you. And also, Councilmember Nash, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to add, are there any, so, I know we just had Ms. Sanchez Jones add that one. I wanted to make sure that there were two... I wanted to make sure that there were two other priorities that we had, which is the Community Builders Program, which I assume that the school system will be supporting, but wanting to make sure that we support the Community Builders Program, and also to make sure that we are supporting the Safer Communities Grants and making sure that, you know, that continues as we've been a good steward of those funds, and we'd love to steward some more.
Yeah, thank you. So the Safer Communities Grants would go under Public Safety, and the Community Builders is an education topic, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
And it's also a violence prevention effort, so it's kind of both end. And I think another thing that would be helpful to delineate in this, Vice Mayor, is items that we brought forward last year that, I'm not sure what status they were, but I'll just give you one example. Under housing, we had brought forward increasing the land bank limit for assessed values. It's currently set at 75,000, and we wanted to update that to have a value of 150,000 or less, which would allow us a larger opportunity for dilapidated or blighted properties. So if there are some that we introduced last session that we really want to prioritize as action, whether they're action or policy, that would be helpful to delineate too.
I would definitely call that an action for this one.
Yeah.
I think that sounds good. And maybe, can I suggest this? I like the idea if each member, and I'll relay this to, well, I don't know if I need to relay it to our school board friends, but if each person can rank in each category your top two or three priorities, get that back to Councilmember Volason and I, we will work together to digest that, give you back the rankings of what everyone selected, and then also take a stab at separating out the actions from the positions. Does that sound right, like what we're talking about? Okay.
Sounds great.
And then the next, the upcoming meeting that we have for the Legislative Committee is October 6th at 9:00 AM. So do we, how long is that between now and then?
We actually, two weeks.
Chair McGuire.
Yes, sir.
What's the deadline that you want the council members to have their three priorities?
So I was just trying to think of what's our, backwards on the timeline. Good question.
If, I'm just, there's two, two weeks? No, three weeks from today would be the next meeting.
So could we say by the end of next week? Does that give enough time? Or do you think that's too much time?
So the 26th?
By the 26th?
Yeah, I think that's plenty of time, and then that gives us time the next week after that to go through and prioritize.
Yeah, because we want to be able to post the agenda by October 2nd, so I was thinking maybe the 24th would be more ideal. So that way, you all can meet by the 26th, and, you know, if there's anything we need from a staff perspective, we need to assist with, we can.
That sounds good. So everyone get your, what we discussed in terms of the feedback to Peter and I, Councilmember Volason and I, by next week, September 24th, please. Close of business. Okay, thank you all for that kind of next steps in housekeeping. Any other questions, or Ms. Rockwell, where, anything else from you that you'd like to flag for us or discuss today?
Yes, I think that's a, I think it's a great plan going forward, so you all can digest this. I just do want to encourage initial outreach to your delegation. And I know that there would likely be a concern of, you know, you don't want to do it too early before everybody has had a chance to review these and separate them into actions and positions. But perhaps there could be a way to begin outreach, maybe at the end of next week, to set up meetings or, you know, conversations in early October, once you do come to a decision by October 6th, so that you're not starting then the outreach process after you've already concluded this process.
I think that sounds great. And yeah, we can work to get those set up with our three state legislators.
Okay, wonderful. And that's my only other comment.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Rockwell, for joining us. I thought that was really helpful and informative. I really appreciate everyone's work. I forgot to thank earlier Sidney Attorney Tim Spencer and Laura Carini for your help on all of this. If, is there anything else, any other business that members would like to bring before the committee today? Any parting words from anyone else? Ms. Rockwell, Ms. Turner, Mr. Roman, anything else?
I would love to say that the last time I was in Roanoke, it was to take the bar, and this is a much more enjoyable reason to be talking with you all, so thank you for this.
Well, come in person sometime. We'll take you out and show you a good time.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rockwell. Tell Preston we said hello. And there being no further business set forth to come before the committee, the meeting of the Legislative Committee is adjourned.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And now we will come back into session for Roanoke City Council, and we are at the second item under Reports of Committees, and this is comments from council members on certain authorities, boards, or committees in which we serve as liaison. Does anyone have any updates from liaison service at this point? Okay. There is no unfinished business to come before us today, so we'll move on to Item 10, Introduction and Consideration of Ordinances and Resolutions. Item 1 is a resolution approving and affirming the action taken by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company Doing Business as Valley Metro to implement fare-free Election Day bus service for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. There was a resolution passed by the Board earlier today, so this comes as a recommendation to council. There is one measure of resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second on the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Hagan and Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving and affirming the action taken by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company Doing Business as Valley Metro to implement fare-free Election Day bus service for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, and authorizing the city manager to take any necessary action to accomplish such fare.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion by council? Yes, Mr. Hagan.
Just want to make sure we get the data back from how much ridership increases that particular day, so.
Yeah, thank you. I know they keep pretty good track of that, so. All right, then, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item 2 is the repeal and replacement of ordinance number 43230-072125, accepting and appropriating fiscal year 26 Virginia opioid abatement authority funds to correct a Scrivener's error. There is one measure in ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the ordinance, second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Volason and Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 43230-072125, adopted July 21st, 2025, to correct a Scrivener's error in the budget revenue account number and adopting an ordinance correcting the error in connection with the accepting and appropriating Virginia opioid abatement authority funds for FY '26 in the amount of $1,273,811.09, with a match from the city in the amount of $163,100, for the total funding in the amount of $1,572,511.09, appropriating 2026 opioid settlement funds detailed more fully infra, and authorizing city manager or designated to execute any documents necessary to accept such funds, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion by members of council? Okay, any additional information from our manager or Ms. Ferguson?
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb. Vice Mayor McGuire, members of city council. The error was actually in the accounting number. Nothing else has changed about the document.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Our next two items involve appointments of members of our community to serve as directors of the Economic Development Authority. The first one regards Duke Baldridge. There is one measure of resolution, and I'll entertain a motion in second.
Move the resolution, second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Hagan and Volason. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution reappointing a director of the Economic Development Authority of the city of Roanoke to fill a four-year term on the Board of Directors.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Item 4 is a resolution appointing Ollie Howey as a director of the Economic Development Authority for the city of Roanoke. One measure of resolution, and I'll entertain a motion in second.
Move the resolution, second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Volason and Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution reappointing a director of the Economic Development Authority of the city of Roanoke to fill a four-year term on the Board of Directors.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you all. Item 11 is motions and miscellaneous business. Are there any inquiries or comments by members of council? Mr. Volason?
Mayor, I would like to, I guess, introduce a council member initiative in regards to the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority. The, this, I'm just trying to think of how to say this. So the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority currently, or was the body that maintained the Explore Park. The Explore Park has been given to Roanoke County under legislation that was passed last, this past legislative session, which allows for the authority to give the land back while also keeping itself as an authority and not dissolving. So the initiative that I'm wanting to put forward is to repurpose and modernize the Recreational Facilities Authority to address long-term capital and maintenance funding gaps for our regional recreational assets that we have here in the city and throughout the region. And it would make sure that we provide high-quality facilities and strengthen our competitiveness in attracting visitors, events, and economic development. Currently, there is a small ad hoc group of folks from the region, but, and it's bipartisan, and we're looking at how we could structure the VRFA to do what I just said, which is maintain those regional assets. And when we talk about regional assets, I think the Greenway would be a great example. We, it's been about 20 years since we started the Greenway. It's going to have to be repaved at some point. And so what this would do is take that burden off of the city and put it on to the authority. We, what I'm asking at this point is, we're very early in discussing this and figuring out what the structure may look like and all that, so I'm asking that the city manager and her staff be able to help with looking at what it would take to become the fiscal agent for the VRFA, and, you know, help with negotiating what that structure would be. And so this is the first step in getting that approval so that we can work with the administration to see what we can do with the VRFA.
Excuse me. Thank you, Councilman Volason, and thank you for the information in the CMI as well as the additional information on some of the history of this authority. Thoughts or questions or comments from council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much for putting this forward, Councilmember Volason. I am excited to look into this and work more on this with you. I think you point out a really important point, something I care a lot about, which is the funding and care for our outdoor recreation facilities, and we know that that's expensive, and we have a lot of need certainly. And so I think what you're, what you have put forward seems like a great idea to me. I had one question about, and maybe we will get to this further down in the process, but so if a, if an asset, let's say the Greenway, if this, if we were to become the fiscal agent and the Greenway were to be, would it be given to the Recreational Facilities Authority? Or something like Carvin's Cove, and what would be the mechanisms or language in place that would prevent us from then at some point in the future losing those or becoming something that we lose control of?
So that's a great question, and that's one of the things that has to be determined by the group, is, you know, will we take over all of the maintenance and ownership and, or not? Or would it be that we are just a way of funding these projects? So that's something that still has to be determined, but in the legislation, that was passed in this past legislative session, the wording is, I'm not going to get it right, so something to the effect of that the locality that has, so let's say it was the Greenway, and it was all the Roanoke City Greenway, the locality that has that, or that it's in, we can give that back to them whenever we'd like. So just like the Explore Park, you know, we were able to give that to the county for, I think, a dollar. And so it would be similar if we were to have an asset, in my mind, it would be a similar process where if the asset was put under the VRFA, and let's say the VRFA goes away or no longer is using that asset, that it would be transferred back to the locality that it's in.
Gotcha. And one follow-up question. Do you envision it being a multi-jurisdiction bodies? There could be representatives from other surrounding counties and areas, so.
Yes, and that's what we're trying to, as we come up with a structure, we want to talk with our regional partners so that they have feedback in that as well, so that we can come up to something that the whole region can really use to improve those assets.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I would just say, thank you for this. I know when it first came on council back in January, you were working on it back then, and we talked about some of your early preliminary thoughts and ideas when you kind of saw that it might be dissolving, you know? So thank you for thinking ahead, and we do need to definitely think about how we maintain our natural resources in our outdoor recreational facilities, because it is what attracts so many people to Roanoke. I mean, people love being able to easily access nature, but at the same time, going downtown and then going to Valley View and then going right back to nature, and just having that, those two just interroving, really positions us uniquely as the locality, so, yeah.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Sure.
I just appreciate what Councilmember Nash said, and you mentioned this in your pitch for your council member initiative, but I don't, I think that there is, it's almost, it's difficult to separate livability and economic development, because I think what's good for our residents and makes our neighborhoods and our city a more desirable place to live is the different side of that coin, is it helps attract and retain other people to our area. So I just like hearing the awareness of that, and I think it's really important as we continue moving forward with this, that we don't forget that those two things, you know, we have our residents here that we care very much about, and what's good for them is going to be great for tourism and new residents as well. So thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm hearing some support for moving forward with this and exploring it. Okay. All right, thank you all, and thank you, Councilmember Volason. All right, any other inquiries or comments today? All right, we don't have any vacancies to consider for appointment, so the council meeting will stand in recess for a closed meeting and reconvene this evening at 7:00 PM.